Good morning, Mayor.
Not yet, all right, hold on. Okay, let me do the intro. Good morning, everyone. This is Mayor Commissioned Work Session. It is March 4th and it's about 10 o'clock. We're going to start out today with item number one, MLK Memorial Wall refurbishment. And we have Tinun Peña here to present. Tinun?
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, everyone, Commissioners. My name is Tinun Peña. I'm the project manager for the refurbishment of the MLK Memorial Wall. And I'm just going to take you through the process we've undergone to put together the renderings that will showcase what we're trying to do to the wall to make it function properly. Currently, the wall is located in Curry Park, right between Piccadilly and Butler Street. Just a brief history about the wall in itself. The MLK Coordinating Committee was formed in 1981. The committee was led by Edith Bush, who worked with the commission to secure a location for this wall. This wall was designed in 1990 and eventually was completed in 2004. As of today, there has been no major improvements to the wall in the last 15 years. The scope and objective of this refurbishment was basically to preserve the reflective space for those visiting the wall in a safe and secure manner. We were to restore the cascading water feature, improve the facade by replacing the deficient granite panels, update the letterings on the wall, secure the space behind the wall. There's a shorter wall behind the actual memorial wall itself that has some engravings on there, which we're going to be relocating, improve lighting in around the memorial wall, and install security cameras in the future. Stakeholder engagement that we undertook, we met with Parks and Rec staff to get their input and some history behind the wall. We met with the Art and Public Place staff to also get their input. We coordinated with the MLK Coordinating Committee. We had a meeting with them to go over the deficiency and what we were proposing. And then we have another meeting scheduled to be held either this week or next week with the Western Field Neighborhood Association. Just a brief summary of the existing condition. As I mentioned earlier, the water feature is inoperable. We do have localized water intrusion on the granite wall itself. There's a missing granite cap, a missing granite end cap on the surface of the, where we have the pavers. We have calcium buildup stained from the water that's coming from the water feature. There's poor lighting in around the wall itself. The visibility due to the short wall and looking at the observation deck is blocked. We have basically some missing electrical component, poor visibility at night. The letterings in itself are tarnished. And we have some eroded grout lines that we need to reseal and grout to make sure the surface stays tight. So the improvement concept that we undertook with the wall facade is basically to repair the existing plumbing system by replacing it with new piping and cleanouts. This will allow us to flush out the system so we don't have buildups that will make the water feature be more localized when it cascades over the wall. We do look to install a new pump as well as put a grate over the gutter that covers the fountain gutter so that we don't have debris buildup in there. We're going to replace all the missing granite and cracked granite, seal the surface. And also, one of the things we're looking to do is to ensure as people come to visit the wall, they, we're going to be installing a historic information plaque that tells about the history of the wall as well as why we have so many flags. In regards to the short wall behind the wall itself that we're demolishing, we're going to be relocating the quotes to the front of the wall, and I'll show you that in the rendering. And one of the things like I mentioned in the beginning is that we want to make sure the site is safe and secure. So we have a proposed plan to improve the lighting around the wall as well as install security lights and additional light poles in the future. So this is basically the front view of the facade. The difference between this and the existing wall in itself, the wall, the letterings are tightly placed behind the bus in itself, so it's really hard to see Dr. MLK, Dr. King's name. So we're going to spread that out. We're keeping consistent with the color palette, keeping the black granite as well as the brass letter. But we're going to make sure there's space out, and these are brass letters that we can maintain. This is a plan view of the memorial wall. As you can see, there's the paver area, which is in the burgundy color, the grass area. The two little dots are the strategically placed light poles that we're proposing. If you can look closely, you see these little white dots in around the curved area. That's where we look to place in-ground lighting. Behind the wall itself, it shows that we removed the wall. And then we have the future lights in these circles placed in the planter and in around the grass area. The proposed location for the historic information plaque is to the left and the right of the monument. This is just a 2D, 3D type of rendering, kind of gives you a 3D view of what we're proposing. As you can see, what I mentioned with the light poles and the in-ground lighting and the removal of the back wall. This is also another perspective view, just to give you an idea of how it will come out.
Tinun, what's the wall behind the sign that says Martin Luther King? So there's a, is that a wall or is that just?
We're going to be putting a picket fencing similar to what's currently on the observation deck.
Okay.
And then if you look to the bottom of, I'm going to go back real quick. If you look, if you focus on the bus, right below the bus, if you look at the landmark memorial writing, there's a kind of grayish-looking section there. That is where we're going to be relocating all the quotes that we're removing from the back of the wall so that when people come up, they can actually read the quotes. And the whole premise is to eventually navigate them around the wall to walk around the whole thing. And so that's basically it. I'll take questions.
Okay, questions. Commissioner James?
Thank you. Where is the budget for maintenance of this in the future? Is that Parks and Rec?
That is Parks and Recs.
All right. And so can we make sure that that gets done?
Part of what the consultant is going to be providing us is a maintenance manual that I'll be handing over to Parks and Recs, Todd, so that they can use for the future maintenance.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ryan?
Thank you. And to follow up on that, so this is going to come before us as a, both the approve construction and implementation strategy for this. When is this coming forward?
It's coming, face of the city is on the 11th.
Okay, so how much do we have budgeted for the construction and completion? And where are those funds coming from?
The fund was current, was initially allocated through the 3-2-9 funding. However, we've had to shift funding from that. It's going to become out of 304. Originally, it was budgeted to the...
So those numbers don't mean anything to us?
Oh, I'm sorry. The 3-2-9 fund is the $40 million bond funding. And then the 304 fund is the capital improvement fund.
So it's a beautiful presentation, and thank you for doing that. The question about maintenance, I think, is really, really critical because of the 2009, 2004. It was 1990 when the original design was considered, and then 2004 when it was actually constructed. And now we're 18 years later, and we basically are redoing the entire monument with all of the different work that's being done. And I'm really, really, really pleased to see it because it's in a beautiful location. It gets a lot of attention. And I want to not only make sure we have maintenance dollars for that, but that we have program dollars that we can, you know, incorporate many different events, especially during Black History Month in February.
Leah, you want to talk about the maintenance?
Sure. Leah Rockwell, Director of Parks and Recreation. Clarification, 2004 is when additional stuff was done to the monument. It was built before 2004 because it was here, it was built during, when Jeff Coons was on the city commission. So that was before 2004.
Long time ago.
Yes. So we did some other amenities to the monument in 2004. So as far as the maintenance, the way that the fountain feature was designed was not designed to allow for easy maintenance. And the new design is going to allow for cleanouts, which will lengthen the time that this feature will be operational. And our plan is for it to last another 20 years at least with our upkeep and maintenance. As far as the programming goes, the MLK Committee, they do a lot of programming at the fountain, and we'll continue to support them. And, you know, we bring them their benches and their tables and their chairs and everything that they need for their events.
And the Urban League does programming there as well.
Yes, yeah, so.
Great. Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you, Mayor. And I just had a question about the MLK Committee and the stakeholder engagement. You mentioned that we engaged those, you listed four different groups. How was the feedback? And did they feel like everything that they brought up was discussed?
They were very receptive to the proposed, we actually had two options. The option they went with is what I presented to you today. They were very open, and we were able to kind of walk through the process of what we were looking at and what they wanted. And then that's what we came up with, what I presented to you today.
Commissioner O'Nearin?
Thanks, Mayor. Sorry if you mentioned this already. The timeframe for completion?
Currently, we are in design right now. We anticipate completing design by April, late April. I will go to procurement to look for a contractor between April and June. So we will look to start construction around June, July, depending on how soon we can get someone on board.
So fall, maybe by the season is what we think?
Fall, by the end of the year it should be completed. October is what we're looking at to complete this.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for Tinun?
Good job.
Thank you, very well done.
Thank you.
Okay, we're now going on to item number two, our tree program. So before we start, I just want to say that Michael was the winner, Michael and a team that he put together was the winner of our innovation challenge that we had. We put out a challenge to all the employees to come up with innovative ideas and proposals. And we had 22 proposals from all different departments in the city. And Michael's proposal for a tree farm that would be available to the community was the winner.
Awesome. Yay! Well, yes, we're very...
He's our tree guy.
We are very proud of our trees. Good morning, everyone. So Michael and I are here to talk about our tree program. I hope everybody had a good weekend. Last night, I was finally able to see Bohemian Rhapsody. Have you guys seen it?
Yes.
It's so good. So I woke up this morning with Queen music looping around in my head, and I'm thinking specifically, "We are the champions." So we are the tree champions here, and...
The team.
You've got to hang with me now. I'm trying to talk as fast as I can, you know? So not only Michael and I, but also Ray Corancey, Todd Schneider, Greg Mahalco, and Andrew Burnett. We pull in maybe engineers or irrigation people whenever that's needed. And we've also been working with landscape architect Wayne Villavasa, and also an ex-state forester consultant Charlie Marcus. So it's really been a collaborative effort to move this project. We're going to talk about a few things today, our mission, the progress we've made, the tree canopy assessment and tree inventory. Michael's going to talk about that and the urban tree management plan. And then where we're getting our funding from for the tree programs that we've done, and then what we're doing to look forward. Our mission is pretty straightforward. We want to expand the tree canopy we have. We want to protect it. And we want to be good stewards, conservationists, and provide education to our community. So there are a lot of benefits with trees. And one of the words that you may hear from us is ecosystem services. That doesn't just roll off your tongue like you're used to hearing that. But what that really means is all the value in your trees. So it may be carbon sequestration, of course, stormwater retention, the great shade and cooling. You know, if you plant a tree on the south and west side of your building, you're going to have cooler, cooler time in the summer, so your air conditioning's a little better. So you even get a little energy reduction. And it increases your property value. They can, of course, add beauty, habitat. And it goes right along with some of our other core initiatives, like our mobility plan, to get people out walking and biking and out of their cars. So what have we been doing this past year or two? It may not see like a lot of visible signs because we have not planted a lot of big trees yet. But just like anything, devil's in the details. So our team has been working on updating the landscape code that will protect our trees better. And we're expanding what's required for trees in the landscape. We have internal policies now for our city operations through the Star Communities Program, IPM, Integrated Pest Management, so that we're not wanting to put chemicals in our areas, or at least to the least possible. And we also have landscape guidelines that say we're going to get rid of our invasive exotic plants, and we're going to focus on natives. So we're really trying to put all of that together and support our trees. We've been doing a tree canopy assessment that's taken two years to do. We were waiting on LiDAR from the county. We got it, it's done, it's great, you're going to love it. Michael will tell you more about it. We're also have initiated a tree inventory that is going to be a great resource for everyone, not just within trees, but for residents as well. Our downtown tree and assessment and irrigation study, this is the reason that we have not gone ahead and planted trees in the downtown right now. We don't want to put money, good money after bad, so to speak. We know that there are irrigation problems. There, the trees that are missing died for a reason. We've also been looking at who really is responsible for the tree. In some cases, it's our developers. There's a maintenance agreement that we're trying to get people to recognize and make good on. So we've been doing a very in-depth assessment, and we will be coming back to you all when we find out what's happening with the irrigation system to see how we might move forward in improving that. But we are about to go out to bid for six of large trees for the downtown. We've also partnered with FPL to put some large trees in at Howard Park to go along with our solar tree program. So we used some of our million-dollar tree fund to put six 20-foot trees in the Howard Park, and then FPL funded four more. Part of the sustainability offices effort has been to give trees to residents. Now, these are three-gallon trees, they're natives, and we have given away over 4,000 of them in the last four years. It's really a well-received program. We also, for the first time, really have a tree, urban tree management plan, which you'll hear a little bit more about, that we got a small grant to help us fund that. I talked about the maintenance agreement for trees, but we're also going to be using that not just in the downtown, but as we move out and put trees in the community, some of the bigger projects that we have that might call for trees in the parkways. We're going to be asking our residents or the property owner to be able to take care of those trees, which is what is supposed to be happening now, but that sometimes happens and sometimes doesn't. And then we've also added a different kind of planting program as far as how we actually are going to plant our trees in the downtown. It's called a suspended paver system, and I'm sorry, we should have set up the framework for it. But it's basically a structure that allows sidewalk or pavers on the top structure so that on the inside is good soil, healthy, alive soil for the trees to be able to prosper. Most urban trees only have a life expectancy of seven to eight years. So if you think about it, there's this compacted soil or sand, given what we have here. You plop a tree in it, so it's sort of like a bowl. It grows a little bit, and just when you think it's going to start looking great, it starts to die back because there's no place for the roots to go. And that's why we're looking at this suspended paver system.
Yeah, and that's what we used on the 300 block. So you might have seen it as you were walking down there.
Absolutely. And we're going to be using it on the 200 and 100 block as well. So Michael's going to talk to you about a few things now.
Good morning. So yes, over the like, over the last couple of years, we've really worked hard to lay a foundation, lay a basis for our tree program. In order for us to manage what we have, we need to know what we have. We need to be able to measure what we've got. So we first initiated a tree canopy assessment. This assessment used GIS, used a lot of different data layers, and helped us identify exactly where our tree canopy is within the city of West Palm Beach. It gave us an average tree canopy coverage of about 30%, and this includes everything downtown, all parts of the city outside of Grasswaters Preserve. So in general, you know, we say we've got about 30% coverage. And this gives us a target to build off of and something to build upon so we could increase our canopy. In doing this analysis, we were able to identify other, I guess, coverages within the city. We identified impervious surface, water, vegetation, a lot of other different things. And so we came up with a map that's got classification for every pixel on the map. Everything is classified as something. And this allows us to be able to just identify really what we've got going on here in the city. To complement the tree canopy, we wanted to build a couple of other maps with different data sets, just to kind of run some relationships, run some correlations, and see if this canopy correlates with any other types of trends that we've got going on in the city. And we're still working on a lot of this analysis, but we built maps that showed temperature, stormwater inundation, community health, different attributes and characteristics of our community, what's going on with our population. And this is going to allow us to be able to target tree canopy in the city, be able to use other data types, and be able to focus, "We need trees over here because it's hot," or "We've got a stormwater issue going on over here, maybe trees could help this out a little bit." All the data that we have is publicly accessible and successful here within the city. You know, we're really willing to share everything that we've got. We update it regularly. Sometimes the vendors that we work with are going to update it every couple of years. Sometimes it's five years. Really just depends on where we're getting the data from and kind of their schedule. And again, all of this data is going to be used to help target and prioritize where the canopy, where the canopy needs are within our community, where we want to increase and where we can increase within the city. To complement the tree canopy analysis, we are conducting a tree inventory. So you can envision the canopy analysis as a very top layer, very broad map of where the trees are, but you don't know exactly what those players are making up that canopy. So that's what the tree inventory is for. This is a lower-level analysis on city-owned properties, so parks, parkways, right-of-ways, anything the city owns. And we're going through and identifying attributes of each individual tree, which is going to take a very long time to do, of everything that's going on with each of these individual trees. Again, this data is GIS-compatible, so it's going to relate, it's going to connect with all the other data that we've got. And we're making it publicly accessible and updating it systematically. We're going through each individual park, we're going down streets, and we're going to set a nice schedule to get all the trees in the city inventoried. In carrying out this inventory, so if you can imagine, it's basically take a laptop out, and it's got a map on it, you drop a point on the map, it brings up a spreadsheet, and you can identify all types of other attributes of this tree. You do the botanical name, the common name, you can do the height, trunk diameter, canopy width, the condition, maintenance responsibility. I mean, you name it, we can put it on here, and you can stand there and update this spreadsheet right then and there. This inventory is going to be really, really helpful because it's going to help us back up what we've got in the city when it comes to storm response, and especially FEMA funding for replacing the trees that we've got. It's going to lay out a diversity matrix, so we're going to be able to tell you how diverse our community is. We don't want monoculture, monoculture. We want something that's very diverse. We want a lot of different trees. This is going to give us an opportunity to identify how many different species we really have. It's going to lay a foundation for maintenance and replacement. Again, it's going to allow us to be able to identify where the trees are, what we have there, and if we need to come in and replace it, we know what to replace with, as well as keep track of the health of each individual tree from time to time. And again, it's again, it's a very great opportunity for education. This is something that's really cool to pull up, you know, on your computer right then and there when you're talking to somebody. You can pull it up on your phone, actually, and kind of show them what's going on. You can pick each of these individual points and really talk about all the different attributes of one individual tree.
Michael, is that available now?
It is. It's an open-source website we've got going on right now through Planet G.
And to what extent is it complete, do you think?
A little bit. Little bit, yeah. We've got 5,000 trees, and right now, it took a real long time to do, and we've covered three parks in the downtown, so we've got a lot more work to do.
Commissioner James, do you have a question?
Thank you. And it really relates to how frequently we update the information. And information is great. And by the way, this is, seems, sounds like a very good program. Now, I think I heard you say that for the tree canopy assessment, that's updated only every two to five years by the vendors and...
Yes, because the data that we use for it is, we depend upon a lot of different vendors, I guess, to pull it all together to update the data. So sometimes they run on a two-year schedule, sometimes it's a five-year schedule.
Okay. Now, if we change vendors, does that information go away? And what about the responsibility for updating if we happen to change vendors during that period of time?
So what Michael is talking about is, for example, we have health information that we get from the state health department. So we pull that in when they have updated information. Or there may be, for the, for an example, with just the canopy coverage itself, the trees don't grow that fast, you know, to see a huge change. So either we want to wait that five years so that we can see the plantings that we've done and the progress, or, say, heaven forbid, we have a storm and it takes out a lot of trees, well, then certainly right after that, we would want to do another assessment. I mean, if you think about what Michael has done up in the Panhandle, I think Todd was sharing...
Not this Michael.
Not this Michael.
Hurricane Michael.
Hurricane Michael. I think Todd was sharing with us that 70% of the tree canopy is gone. So if there was a case like that, we'd go right back in as we needed to. So it's really not, it's not a vendor that we contract with, it's another place that we get data from.
Okay. Sure. And so we've laid this foundation, but we need a way to communicate this to the community and communicate this within the city. So this past year, we've worked on an urban tree management plan. This was funded through a grant through the Florida Forest Service. And this basically gave us an opportunity to collaborate, work together, and get the different departments together to come up with some best management practices and outline the standards for how we want to care for the trees in the community. This gives us a way to champion our healthy and sustainable urban forest. Our plan that we have together highlights the value of the trees, it outlines the current tree program that we're following, but it also makes recommendations for the future for how we can increase our tree canopy and some adjustments we need to make within the city to have a more healthy urban forest. the city to have a more healthy urban forest. And because it's a hard-written document, we can take it out in the field with us. It's great for the Parks and Rec guys to actually show residents who have questions what, you know, our standards are and how we're going about handling each of the tree issues that we identify.
Did you guys wear green on purpose today?
Would we do that?
Commissioner Lambert?
Before you switch back, I just had a question about the capturing of the data. So you mentioned that you've done three parks so far, is that right, two or three? How long will it take to do all of the rest of our parks? And are we going, I'm sure we're going about it in some kind of efficient or systematic way?
Right. Well, I guess it depends on how many feet you have on the ground. Last summer, we were working with some interns, and you know, we've been updating it among ourselves, but it takes, takes a lot of people or a whole lot of time to do this, so.
We had interns out and about last summer. You know, they would come dragging in because it was 95 degrees, and they were counting trees, but they did a really great job. So we'll have interns again this summer as well.
We're hoping to not just have them during the summer now, but Michael and I are going to talk to Palm Beach State College to try and get some of their horticulture students because you can't just have anybody do it. You've got to have someone who has at least nominal, you know, knowledge of the trees.
Commissioner Ryan?
Thank you. Just to follow up on the count, I remember when I first got on the commission four years ago, we were talking about needing to do this count and that all of the barriers to achieve that because you have to get a baseline of information. So is this the baseline where we are now to help build on that? And then when you talked about the engagement and with the other departments, one of the things that, you know, Penny, we've been in the community many, many times where people want to be a part of this, they want to help us as much as possible. We have lots of landscape architects, we have lots of horticulturists, and in my neighborhood particularly, El Cid, they have been, for two years, been trying to participate. So in this engagement with the rest of the city, are we able to incorporate now our communities and the outside resources that really want to help us with this?
I think we would take on anybody that wants to help us, that, you know, that we can recognize as being somewhat qualified with that, for sure.
And that's the question, because they're wanting to find that point of entry in which they can be determined as qualified. I know you finally sort of certified the El Cid neighborhood guys as being sufficient to plug into this, but I'm, he's not sure where to plug in yet, so.
Well, we really are ju, the reason we're coming to you today is that all of this work has sort of come to fruition right now, and we are looking to really move forward, especially with the, you know, with the inventory. So now is a great time, and we will be reaching out. This program, you know, you have your iPad, Surface Pro, whatever we're using, and you literally take a picture of the tree at the same time, and it's uploaded into the software as well. So even if there was some question about, hmm, do I really know what tree variety that is, we could, between all of us, we could figure it out. So we'll be reaching out.
Yeah, maybe we could do a call for volunteers and do a little training for the people who might want to be a part of this and send them out into the neighborhoods.
Yeah, be happy to do that.
Great.
Thank you.
Question, Mayor.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thank you. More a comment. You kind of glossed over it, but I think it was a great idea. You said we got a grant from the Florida Forest Service. How much was that? Whose idea was it? That's, that's, seems like some very innovative thinking.
We're always looking for money and help, just so you know. It was a $20,000 grant, and we added to it between our budget and the parks' budget to sort of expand it a little bit. We're, we are still looking for those grants. They're not usually large, and for example, the reason we're going this route with the tree canopy, oh, excuse me, the tree inventory, is the estimate that we got on contracting it, $240,000. So typically, what happens in cities, they do parts of a city, so you know, maybe you'll get a fifth of a city done every year, and then it just continues to roll. We're hoping to do a lot better than that and focus on, you know, our community engagement and our interns.
Great job.
Well, we've got a couple more things, and I'll try and move through them quickly. Our million-dollar tree fund, I wish we had come up with a better name for it than that. We haven't done that yet, but it sure says a lot when you say a million dollars. So totally thank you to the mayor for setting that aside. And what we're doing with that, we are targeting the northwest and the downtown. So that is where we've been getting our assessments and how we're going to be planting some trees. There, some of that funding was also used for the 300 block of Clematis. We used it for the Howard Park trees, also the assessment that's happening in the downtown right now. And we are, we have a plan that we're going to be working with the northwest to find out what kind of trees they like, who wants to take care of the tree, and then signing that agreement with that. The 10,000 Trees in 10 Years is a program through our budget that I've really already talked about, but it's about engagement, awareness, and education. And then the Tree Canopy Mitigation Fund that actually Ray sort of oversees is from typically developers, although I guess if it was a big residential program or something, that could be part of it too. But it is for developers that cannot, that have to remove trees and cannot put the correct amount of trees back on their land. They pay into a mitigation fund, and then those funds are used on our public property to plant trees, and those requests do come to the commission for approval. Okay, looking forward, there's always an ask, right? So we're going to be coming back and asking you for some things. But obviously, we want to maximize our tree canopy coverage. If you saw the canopy assessment when Michael was talking, the lighter colored blocks were the fewer trees. So we want to target in on those areas that need trees. We want to complete our inventory, we'll do our updates. The urban tree management plan, a plan is great, but you have to have dollars for it. So I just want to go back to say that, you know, we need to care for the trees that we have now. We also want to reestablish the tree replacement fund. There was one, and it sort of disappeared, I don't know, like 10 years ago or something, not quite that long ago. So we want to have a fund specifically for replacing trees. And one of the things that will help a lot with our maintenance of our parks and our existing trees and parkways is to clarify who really is supposed to do it.
Yeah, and I think that the whole question of the trees and the swales, that needs to be clarified too, because people don't understand at this point that they're responsible for those trees. And sometimes they are, and sometimes they aren't. We just need a consistent practice.
Absolutely, because what happens, and I don't want to speak too much for Todd, but what I understand is that his folks are so busy working on trees in parkways that they then don't have the time to put into the parks. So if we could clarify that, because sometimes we take care of them and sometimes we don't. So whether there was a contractor that took care of them, whether there was another crew, but it's really a big deal in getting our canopy really protected and thriving. Then we're also looking at creating an urban forester and a landscape inspector. You know, we have all of this tree programs going on and all this interest, yet for a city of our size, we should have someone that specifically is focused on that. This team has been working on it in addition to everything else that they're doing. So you'll be hearing about that hopefully later. We're going to expand our education programs. We're going to really try and get updated on all of our landscape maintenance agreements. So in that tree inventory, we're going to be able to click on a tree, and you'll be able to see who's taking care of it. Is it the city, or is it one of the buildings downtown? We want to continue to strengthen our pre, tree protection codes, and then, of course, enhance code enforcement to make sure that everybody knows we're serious about taking care of trees. So, back to my first comment about Queen. You know, we want everyone to be a champion, and we need your help, so thank you very much.
Thank you, well done. And we appreciate you guys for all the work that you're doing. So thank you, all you tree champions over there. Just don't make us break out into song.
Yeah, you don't want me singing either.
Commissioner Ryan, do you have a question?
I do, and you brought it up when you first introduced this and said that they had won the award for innovation about the tree farm, and I was really excited to see if it was in your presentation, but it wasn't. Because, you know, we're going through all of this work in the neighborhoods and, you know, upgrading the infrastructure part of the bond work, and it's a real battle with the community, which trees are coming back, which trees are going to get replaced, because, you know, and I'm sure that Mr. Kelly knows a lot about the impacts of the neighborhood on those trees. So are we close to having a place to maybe when we take them out in that infrastructure repair, to put them and begin that tree farm?
Yeah, it's two different things that we're talking about. Michael, just quickly tell us about, quickly.
Sure. Okay, so the innovation challenge idea that we had was actually a, we called it a food forest. It's a bunch of fruit trees. It's a fruit grove.
Tell me the name of it.
So we're going in a food forest, but our group name was Two to Mango and Trees a Party. And so the idea is to, is to plant some fruit trees.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Two to Mango Trees a Party. So the idea was to plant some fruit trees within one of the neighborhoods and get a lot of neighborhood input on what types of trees they would like to see there, what type of fruit they would like in their community, and make it available for the community residents.
So they would, they would be able to go and get the fruit off the tree, and it would be part of their?
Right, right. And the site we identified was on Henrietta Avenue next to Henrietta Bridge Farms. So they're working on cleaning that site up now, and we'll put in some irrigation, start planting trees, hopefully by the end of the summer.
Good, thank you. Okay, Commissioner Neary?
Yeah, just a quick comment, and that's really to the entire team. I think when we talk about becoming a phenomenal city of the future, so to speak, this is integral. This is, this is so important, and oftentimes, the more polarizing issues are the ones that are highlighted. But this kind of work are the things that, no pun intended, but we're literally planting trees that we don't intend to sit under and witness its greatness, so to speak. So thank you to the team for all your work on this.
Thank you. I mean, you're right, this, Penny and her team do amazing things every day, and it's, you know, it's not stuff people even know about or talk about. And, you know, kudos to you all.
Right?
I forgot something.
Uh-oh.
Yeah, sorry. Ray Coranci, landscape planner. To answer Commissioner Ryan's question a little bit better, as we've been working with parks, with one of the residents in El Cid who's very enthusiastic about planting and reforested there, so we're doing a cooperative, like a pilot program right now, where the city's going to pay 50% of the cost of the trees, and the residents are going to pay 50% of the cost, and we'll move forward with that. And it's one of the first programs that we're going to do, but we'd like to do this in each neighborhood as we go to see where trees are needed and get the community involved to plant them and take care of them.
Super, thanks. Commissioner James?
Back to that program, so paying for 50% of the cost of acquisition, or 50% of the, I mean, and then how are the maintenance responsibilities discussed and assigned?
Right, so that's just about the initial cost is for planting and getting the, getting the trees in. Then, we've developed over the last year and a half, an agreement with, with the city attorney that the residents will sign, kind of making a commitment to take care of that tree, that they're going to take responsibility for it. And I think that's the biggest step is, you know, having the community and the neighborhood invest in, in supporting us and in doing this, so. Okay?
All right. Thank you, guys. Good job. Okay, we're now going on to item number three, lake levels at Lake O.
Okay. The reason I'm coming to you today is to bring everybody up to speed. I think everybody's probably heard about Congressman Brian Mast's proposal, which has now been taken up all the way up to the White House as well as by our governor, to lower Lake Okeechobee at the end of the dry season to 10.5 elevation, thinking that that would stop the discharges, you know, the high algal discharges to the St. Lucie River as well as the Kualusahatchee River. His main concern is the St. Lucie, he's not really as much concerned about the Kualusahatchee. So it was, you know, well-intended, that hey, look, you lower the lake level at the end of the dry season, and it can end up making capacity for the wet season rains, and then you don't have to do releases, hopefully during the wet season. So that, that's the theory of it. Unfortunately, there's a lot more to it. This is a very complex system. I'm going to talk to you today about that, about how complex our water resources are in this county. Probably the most complex in all of the United States. I mean, it's just, it's incredible, the interdependencies and all the things that we deal with in water resources. Penny, you know, was talking about Queen. I just happened to, when I start talking about the challenges that we're facing with this type of proposal, I was thinking more of R E M, and it's the end of the world as we know it. But unfortunately, we don't like it, okay? Because it really is something that's very serious, I'm making light of it. But this is very serious, and I'm going to talk to you why it's extremely serious. First off, I'm going to give you just five minutes of background on our water supply system so everybody can get oriented. We're going to talk about the drought management plan that the city put in place that is, I feel, a very robust system, but there's current and future challenges, and we have to be aware of that. And we recognize when we put that plan in place, it was an adaptive management plan that we would have to come back and revisit. And then we're going to talk about what's next. First, overview of the West Palm Beach water system. We get 50% of our water supply from grassy waters, water catchment area. It's a rain-driven system, pure. You can go out there, and I was just out there on Friday, you can literally drink the water out, untreated out of the preserve. I mean, it is a pristine remnant of the Everglades and is pure. And then we can talk about Lake Okeechobee, okay, where we get our other 50% of our water supply during the dry season, which is not nearly as pristine, and there's challenges associated with it. You know, this system is huge. It's a, one of the few surface water systems in South Florida. We get, we have a series of canals that, you know, we manage this water system. We've got a whole staff of 15 people that manage these water resources. You know, so it is not, it's a very complicated, complex system that we have to do extensive modeling and make, you know, constant decision-making in regard to how best to manage this system. Just a little graphics there. So let me just bring us up to date. In 2015, we implemented a water supply plan, and the purpose of the plan at the time was to demonstrate the benefits of what we had made in, in water resource investments since the 2011 drought. You know, we went through a process where we estimated future water demands, and we actually went on a 50-year planning horizon, which was unheard of at the time. We included all the future growth of West Palm Beach. We evaluated all these supply options, and we, and we developed, which has been very successful, an adaptive water supply strategy. And we, we ended up making sure that it was clear that we would continually reevaluate this. So we were, you know, we were on schedule to come back every five years, do a reevaluation of this plan to make sure that it's, that it's still meeting our needs. of this plan to make sure that it's still meeting our needs. We put together this water supply model, it was very sophisticated. The main feature of this was a physical model where we used a water evaluation and planning model out of the Stockholm Environmental Institute. We had, you know, a couple of doctorate folks, professors, that came in and modeled the whole system, all the way up the Kissimmee River Basin. It was a huge effort to model everything. And we ended up doing a gap analysis based on that of what we looked towards 2065. We looked at supply options and combinations of different alternatives. And again, we ended up having to use some fairly sophisticated decision support modeling because there's a lot of options, a lot of alternatives that we could undertake. And we ranked these alternatives based on performance. But I think something that's extremely important is if you set, see, test under scenarios. So, we took the historic record of history of all the droughts that occurred in the last 20 to 30 years, and we tested this under those droughts. And these are the worst droughts, the 2011 drought, the 2000, 2001 drought. And we tested all these, and this suite of alternatives met all those droughts, okay? They met all those droughts, and including with new growth with the city. So, hey, we were pretty happy about that, you know, that, and we ended up completing all, the construction of all those alternatives, and everything was great up until a couple weeks ago, when we hear, you know, that, hey, now we want to lower the lake. So, we came up with a recommended strategy, as I mentioned. We evaluated supply options. I mean, we went through every potential option, seawater desal, C-51, deepwater storage, you know, expanding all the various alternatives we have now, including aqua for storage and recovery and wellfields and that sort of thing. This was the decision that I mentioned, we used a multi-criteria decision software, support software. And we came up with that. And here's the ones we implemented, and they're, the construction of these are all complete. We have all this in place. We're still modifying some of our permit conditions where we could gain capacity without having to spend any money. We just end up saying, hey, look, we remodeled, we did modeling on this, and we could actually get more capacity out of some of the existing facilities. We have permitted capacity through the regulatory agencies.
Didn't we also construct nine wells along the canals to capture seepage and stuff like that?
Yeah, that was the expanded eastern wellfield, as you see there. And we expanded tidal capture, we expanded aqua for storage and recovery, we've done demand-side management by reducing demands. And as I mentioned, we've been to the regulatory agencies and, you know, this is things that we can increase capacity by just saying, hey, look, we can demonstrate we could pump this wellfields 90 days a year and not cause any environmental damage instead of 60 days. So, can you imagine, that's a...
And we know that the western wellfield adversely affect the lakes in some of our communities, so we've avoided trying to get water from the western wellfield because of the effect on the lakes.
So, we set up a hierarchy, and the western wellfield would be the last option of last resort.
And if we have to go to that last option because there's no water in Lake Okeechobee, Commissioner Ryan?
Yeah, thank you, Scott. I wanted you to stop because you talked about the permitting side. And I think it's important to understand that we can, the things that we have control over, you know, we have control over, but then there is a whole series of things that people permit and tell us we can or can't do, and they're making those decisions based upon other concerns, not necessarily ours.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the Army Corps is going to learn about our concerns from our Congresswoman, so hopefully that will get shared.
Yeah. So, as I mentioned, we have an immediate challenge because this has come forward in regard to lowering the lake 10.5. The Corps is putting together a study, it's a three-year study. We have to go through, you know, environmental reviews and all types of reviews, it's going to take three years to do that. My concern is that in the meantime, the Corps feels that they can, and I'm going to show you in a minute how dangerous this is, that they can lower the lake to 10.5 this spring if they so choose to do that. And they're actually, as we sit here today, lowering the lake level. And I'm going to explain what the issue with that is. But, we've been working together with all the stakeholders in Palm Beach County, and there are a number, and I mentioned the other day...
Yeah, we're not alone in this.
We're not alone. This issue has more, has brought more stakeholders to the table. I've never seen an issue that's, we've been more united in Palm Beach County because we're standing side by side with Palm Beach County, the Southeast Florida Utility Council, which represents all the interests of all the wellfields along, utilities wellfields along the eastern seaboard, all the way down through Broward County. You know, we're working together with the ag interests as well as Indian Trails Improvement District, whoever thought, we're working together with Jupiter, I mean, Lakewood Improvement District. We stand firm and united on this. And so, I mean, that's really the strength of this, is that everyone agrees that this is not a good idea, unless you happen to be on St. Lucy River and you have just, you know, you have that one singular concern, which is the algae release. Everybody else understands what the concerns and how complex this is. So, you know, it can be impact on life and safety in regard to water supply, there's definitely economic impact, we're looking at econometric studies, we're going to do our own, everybody's doing their own, Seminole Tribe's, one of the members of our coalition, they're actually doing one right now. I've talked to the chamber about, you know, can we look at combining these into a regional study that would show the impacts of this? You know, we know, and even admittedly, the Corps knows there would be more frequent water shortages by doing this, and there would be watering restrictions, which impact a, you know, a broad category of landscapers and, you know, people that maintain landscape, that sort of thing. So, it's jobs, too. Saltwater intrusion, as I mentioned, the coastal wellfields, there's real concern that those coastal wellfields will salt up if you don't supply fresh water, you know, from Lake Okeechobee. And then damage to sensitive wetland system, grassy waters preserve. But also, we're looking at the Loxahatchie River. We provide, we provide the water, I don't think people realize this. West Palm Beach provides the water for minimum flows and levels during the dry season for the Loxahatchie River, one of the two water sitting rivers in the state of Florida. Without us supplying that water, you're going to have saltwater movement up the river and it changes permanently the nature of the flora and fauna and the nature of that river. We've already seen it, where you end up seeing cypress trees disappear, you know, as you move up the river. You've seen the damage, I think everyone's aware of the damage on the Loxahatchie River. So...
Just a minute, Scott. Commissioner James?
Thank you, Scott. Based upon what you just mentioned, is it safe to say that the city is definitely on top of this issue and is working with the appropriate partners and the stakeholders to fully address the concerns of our citizens?
Yes, and we've been quite vocal in our spoken, and I...
And as I said, we're working with Congresswoman Frankel as well at the federal level. As she sits on the Appropriations Committee, she's on the subcommittee that appropriates for the Army Corps, so she'll have some influence there.
So, we've been educating her staff, but also meeting together with all the stakeholders. I made a present, you know, we presented at several venues. I've, working together with the county, we went, I went to the county commission meeting, we're talking about how do we all work collaboratively together, because it's going to take that to...
Oh, gosh, do we work collaboratively with the county?
Oh, yeah.
All the time.
Yeah.
All the time. Commissioner Ryan?
Thank you. One of the things that I am concerned about is that the Corps is working to lower without anybody's input. Right now, as we speak, they're doing things...
Well, they have the input from the Everglade Fund, who's totally supportive of this, our former commissioner.
That's not my question. My question is, is, so, if we are looking to work collaboratively, and I understand, I was up in Stuart, I spoke against this there with the Corps, but you said the Corps is taking action now. They're doing things now. They're not necessarily waiting to hear whether appropriations are going to flow for them to do what they're doing. So, my concern is, is there a level in which they will stop that will prevent us from reaching that critical stage?
I have to take their word for it, of what they presented when we were at the county I've heard them say other things. Their current proposal right now is to go three weeks with releases and then see where we're at. I've heard them say that they have, they're entitled to go down to 10.5 this summer, I mean, this spring if they want to. Now, whether they'll want to go that far, I don't know, because I'm going to show you right now what the potential danger of doing this is.
Is there a better way to address the algae issues that can be proposed?
Septic tanks.
Yeah, I mean, there's septic tanks all along the St. Lucy, all along the St. Lucy.
It's been estimated that 50% of the issues are due to septic tanks up there. And in fact, it's evidence that septic tanks are a big cause of it, because they were having algae blooms when there's no releases occurring this spring, you know? So, obviously, there's something else other than just the releases. There is no short-term answer to any of this. What we're trying to do is optimize what we can do, you know, and we all work together to try to come up with a plan on how to manage this to minimize the releases, but not damage everybody else when you're doing that, and not be singularly purpose is just St. Lucy River. There's a lot of other things out there, as I mentioned, that are impacted by water level, particularly in this county. The largest agricultural interest in the state of Florida, thousands of people working in that industry, they can't get water, you're going to have people out of work, you're going to impact, you know, they're predicting it'll impact national prices on vegetables. I mean, that, I mean, this is serious stuff, so. But I, but I want to kind of show you example of, because there's, you don't have to go back too far in history to understand what the potential of lowering it to 10.5 is. And so, if you take a look at this, that's where they're proposing to drop it to, and they propose to thread the needle. They don't want to be in the water shortage ban, but they're proposing that they would drop it to 10.5 exactly on June 1st. Well, we all know that weather doesn't cooperate. This would be more than, this would be more difficult than putting somebody on the moon to guarantee that you'd be at 10.5 and that we wouldn't be in a water shortage on June 1st.
That we'd have our regular rains.
Because we don't know what is going to rain, okay? And to show you how difficult this is, you just have to go back to year 2000, okay? April 25th, the Corps did emergency releases because the lake was rising and it was at 14.7. So, they did emergency releases and they, and their goal was to drop the lake to 13 feet, okay? Not 10.5. These massive releases ended up causing all kinds of havoc in the estuaries. So, people were going crazy, releasing all this water, trying to get this level down. Well, by May 21st, because it stopped raining, they were able to reach that 13-foot goal. That's only a week away from the June 1st, so they reached the 13 feet. They terminated the releases. Unfortunately, dry weather continued, and then ensuing month, and just in one month, the lake dropped to 12 feet. Now, this is in the summertime when it's supposed to be raining, okay? And it stayed all summer that way, in spite of a weather prediction that was supposed to be above-average rainfall for that summer. It never occurred. It didn't rain much that summer. So, they weren't sufficient to raise the lake level back up, and if you take a look at it, you want to stay in this base flow, somewhere in this base flow band, okay?
I'm not seeing the light, Scott.
What's that? Oh, you don't see that?
Blue.
Oh, okay, got it.
Okay, you want to stay in that. So, at the end of, at the end of the dry season, you want to be somewhere between 12 and 13 feet. This is where they want to be down here, which is right on the edge of a water shortage. Okay, so, I'm taking you back to year 2000. So, anyway, it didn't rain in the summer, and unfortunately, it didn't rain in the fall either. And by the next spring, Lake Okeechobee was down to 8.97 feet, a record at that particular point in time. Now, year 2, so, 11 years later, we have another drought, it actually dropped lower than that. That drought actually was even more severe. So, it's just really a concern that we're getting away from the long-term comprehensive Everglades Restoration Plan goals, which was to 15 feet at the end of the wet season and 12 to 13 feet at the end of the dry season. These are goals that were developed over a long period of time with a lot of study, a lot of modeling, a lot of really smart people that came up with that. And it's very disconcerting to me now that we're just flying by the seat of our pants to moving forward. So, I'm concerned, and, you know, on top of this, you know, this is part of the adaptive strategy we were going to be looking at, because climate change is definitely impacting with more severe droughts and water shortages, more harmful algal blooms and more water quality issues. And we've been able to adapt to that by being able to meet that and adjust the way we operate our system and meet these concerns. And as I mentioned, you know, as climate change, we may not be able to provide enough water for the environment. And we have some very, very important water systems that are natural in water environments, marshes and such as grassy waters, such as Loxahatchie River within our county. So, I, I'm bringing this up because even though I feel comfortable that we've put a system in place, who would have ever thought as we were doing this, that someone artificially would lower the lake from where it's supposed to be, some two to three feet? And, you know, my concern is, they lowered the lake to 10.5, and the example I gave you, they lowered it 13 feet that year. Where would we be today if they had lowered it to 10.5? You know, Lake Okeechobee may have been down to five or six-foot elevation, and that's catastrophic for everybody, so.
Well, thank you for that good news, but thank you for, you know, putting up the good fight. Commissioner Neary?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for that presentation. It did, it's very sobering. Sounds like from, from an organization standpoint, Mayor, in terms of what we can do as a city from an advocacy standpoint, that we are, are doing that. Is there anything else? I mean, it sounds like, again, the strategy around kind of coalescing the different groups, that's happening. Obviously, we have support in Washington on this issue. Is there anything else, the city level, that we should or can be doing?
Well, I'm going to bring you all a resolution. That's why I really wanted to go over it today. A resolution that I would ask you to support, so.
Okay.
And then we can send that off. And, you know, it takes, it will take a lot of political courage for people to say, it's time to get rid of your septic tanks and start, and it's going to cost money. Yeah. Commissioner Ryan?
Thank you. Scott knows that I sit on the Water Resource Task Force with the county, and we've been talking for the last year about how we can create one voice that takes in all of the systems, because we're not feeling that we're getting, taking, you know, paying attention to, and that there's been a lot of conversation. I mean, you can talk in much greater detail about that. But are we any closer to getting, as we work together, are we any closer to getting that group identified and the leadership role being approved by all the different parties? I think as we advocate, we need to advocate, obviously, from strength, and we can all do our own resolutions and we all can go and speak, but we need to be really unified as a group of affected stakeholders and having that strong voice that speaks for that large impact.
Yeah, and I'm very close to the chair of the Water Resource Task Force. Historically, they haven't really done much in regard to putting together positions on water resources within our county, but they're getting activated. And, you know, we've ended up going to them and saying, hey, we really feel like that we need to end up putting people that are knowledgeable on a committee that would give technical input to the Water Resource Task Force so they can make recommendations to county commission. It got somewhat short-circuited because when I went over to county commission, the county commission instructed the staff to start putting together their own effort in regard to looking at the technical aspects and pulling all the groups together. And, you know, hopefully, they're going to budget some funding so that we can end up, again, I agree with you, we need to speak as one voice. You know, there is no one in this county that I've found that doesn't believe strongly that we shouldn't lower the lake to 10.5. So is even in environmental groups, everybody is in agreement, so.
Commissioner James?
Thank you. A couple of questions. Scott, is there any risk of any algae infection to grassy waters?
Well, I mean, there, I, I mean, I don't want to say there's never any risk, but I want to say that we mitigate any risk.
We watch it.
Because we watch it. In fact, we catch outbreak, we predict outbreaks of algae before anybody else does. We have a, we have a network of data collection equipment that's out there on the L-8 so that we can close off our canal system before it ever gets into the city-owned system, okay? So we watch it, and if there's an earliest detection of algae, we turn it off. So we shut off from the regional supply. So, no, we haven't had outbreaks of algae.
And that's what happened, what was it, last year, that?
Yeah.
You know, our water managers realized that it was problematic and cut off our supply and, and, you know, we did not get affected by the blue-green algae.
Well, that's good. I think the public needs to hear that.
Well, and we just completed, we're almost complete with that part of the plant, you know, the water plant. Just another layer of defense is we put a structure that would protect any, you know, if algae did make its way, which it hasn't, but if it did make its way, that this would be another level of defense within the treatment process. So we included that as part of the ultraviolet disinfection project. We included this other structure, so.
Okay. And I want to go back to that model that you have, and does this give us the flexibility to put in different assumptions regarding growth and then do a gap analysis and ensure that we have those means in place?
Yeah, and, and as I mentioned, this is adaptive. We would go back, we would put the latest estimates in. One of the things in light of what's happened now, I'm going to go ahead and reach back out to the consultant we had. They're out of Boulder, Colorado, but.
Yeah, you said every five years is 2020, so let's do it now.
Yeah, we're close. But I'm going to reach out to them now and test what the, what the Corps is stating, hey, we can go down 10.5, it's not an issue. Well, we'll test that within this model and see what the potential is, and test it against those historic droughts like the 2000, 2011 drought. You know, what if you lower, artificially lower those levels and then go into those kind of droughts? You could see it could be catastrophic for everyone in the county.
Well, I also want to make sure that we are staying on top of the demands that arise from our growth.
Yeah.
As a city, and that we're plugging in those accurate numbers as we continue to, to grow and test them against this.
Yeah, and, and we actually included those as part of this model.
Yeah, when we did this, we went, we looked at every parcel and the potential of every parcel in terms of growth and plugged that all in.
Yeah.
I don't know if you were here. Yeah, you must have been, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we did sensitivity analysis on that growth, so I feel real comfortable that, you know, we're covering the growth. But again, you know, we would, we would recalibrate that to actual conditions after five years and then go back and redo this, so.
Can I follow up with something you said? Follow up with something you asked. Thank you. The mayor was talking about the algae blooms and the Water Resource Task Force and Treasure Coast Regional Planning. They've all been tasked with trying to come up with what exactly is that that is happening that creates it? There's the assumptions of the, and there are more than assumptions, but the, the septic tanks, there's the assumption that the Lake Okeechobee, but I have never seen a presentation back from any of those groups kind of definitively of where this problem is stemming from and what it is that they think can solve it. So is that true?
Yes, and it's a big debate because you'll hear some folks say, hey, we need to cut the water supply, I mean, the, we need to, to clean this up north of the lake. Some people saying, hey, it's never going to be fixed unless you actually do a very expensive undertaking to try to reduce the phosphorus within the lake, you know, that's in situ in the lake. There's others that say, hey, look, we can treat it as it comes out the south end of the lake and build, you know, facilities, treatment facilities. There's different, from, depending on who you are, there's different proposals, and that is still being debated about the right combination of facilities. And then how is it going to get funded? So in the meantime, we're continuing to look at what are those levels? How do we deal with water quality? Because that's something, I think you bring up a good point, that it really hasn't been studied adequately. Because the Water Management District, you've got to understand their background, they were set up to flood control. You know, they were never set up as an agency that was really going to, their, you know, their first interest is in water quality. It was more of a flood control. So, you know, we really need to spend time as a, as an industry in trying to figure out the answer to that. And so I would like to see a lot more investment, both on the federal, state, and local level, in trying to answer those questions.
I saw it pop up on my calendar, ribbon cutting for the new water plant?
Yeah, yeah, I wanted to make sure everybody knows they're invited. I think it's the 19th. We sent out, sent out invitations and.
Yay.
And we're excited. We, we started it up, and so we're doing the official commissioning, but today as we speak, it's another layer of protection against any type of contamination. And I can say that the level of protection we're offering is, is higher, higher than any water treatment plant in the state of Florida because we do have multiple, multiple layered barriers to prevent any type of contamination. And so, you know, I can comfortably say we're protected against, you know, what ended up occurring back in '08. We never want anything like that to ever happen again, and I feel very comfortable now we have a system that will prevent that ever reoccurrence.
Commissioner James?
Thank you, Mayor. This is just a comment, and I just want to commend you for certainly the team that has been assembled to take on these very complex issues, whether it's drought-proofing the city, ensuring that we have the proper technology for the treatment of our water. The team that you put together has really stayed on top of this, and I think our citizens need to know the kind of good hands that, that we're in. And kudos for you for.
Yeah, thank you for that. You know, our, our water system is in very great shape despite what some people might think. You know, we've won awards for water quality. This new water plant, water treatment is state-of-the-art, and, you know, we continue to work to protect grassy waters. Anything else? Thank you, Scott.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, I have nothing else. Any other questions, comments? Thank you, everyone. Have a great day.